Jim, Doug Edelton's here. I have a student named Zoe. Is anybody else on board here?
Yeah, Pete.
Oh, sorry, Pete. So, um, so I guess, why don't I just dispense with, I'd like to dispense with the formalities. Contract operations is the next one on the agenda. But why don't we wait for Glenn to get here? And we'll pick that up when he gets in, if he gets in. And then, so why don't we move off the budget status? I think everybody was sent the budget, and then there were a couple of updates to what Doug sent out.
Does anybody have any, this is Doug. Does anybody have any questions on the second one I sent you? I was trying to clear things up a little bit.
This is Lynn. When you say the second, you mean the one with the correction?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So where do we think, how much in the hole do we think we are now?
Well, right now, we're not in the hole. I mean, the left-hand column where you see the red is the yearly budget. The actual budget is in the second column. And right now, we're still ahead on revenue than we are expenses. That number is kind of erroneous, though, because we got a little bit behind on our monthly invoices to SUEZ. So I think by next meeting, you're gonna see that number change, probably go down into zero, if not into the red, only because we've had an influx of bills, of money going out. We also paid out the overage on the electrical for seventeen eighteen. And I don't think that hit the books yet. Also, I just received the final one, and I'm assuming it's the final. It is for eighteen nineteen for the overage, which I'm gonna take my time in processing. But that's gonna hit our books as well. That should be the last one, though, because the new contract takes into consideration the overage now, so that we shouldn't have these separate bills any longer, unless we use a lot more power.
Right. But Lynn again, but do you have a new forecast for how we might end the fiscal?
Well, we have the state government delays. We have to give people deferments of up to ninety days. It depends on how many people apply for those. I would think that a lot of the bills that we're gonna see now, and we'll have another set of revenue that will come in in the next cycle, will not be affected by this. It's really kind of six months down the road that we're gonna see a drop in revenue, because that's gonna take in, that's gonna be the new, that's gonna include this era of COVID, where we had the Hilton dropout, we had the Seaport dropout, and the aquarium is probably down a little bit as well. Whether or not that will be, that will be made up by the number of people staying home and more water use in the homes, it's kind of hard to say at this point. It's too early to tell.
Well, so are we, Lynn again, are we seeing, you know, are we in the middle of any kind of building cycle where we might be seeing delinquencies?
No.
Lynn, it's Jim Petroski. I did get quite a large stack of liens this weekend. I think several hundred, you know, and I don't know if that would have been that.
Yeah.
So it does seem, you know, anecdotally, you know, that there are, you know, a little bit of slowness there, but it's, you know, I don't have a statistical, you know, backing for it, but.
Yeah. I think we are gonna be cash flow challenged for the first quarter of the new fiscal. Doug, procedurally, if a taxpayer applies for that deferral relief for his mortgage, is it de facto also the sewer? He has to do a separate application?
You know, I believe they can do it on the same application.
Right.
Doug, this is Rich. What program did the selectmen adopt? Did they adopt the loan program or the deferment program?
Deferment.
Deferment.
And is that a deferment program based upon a hardship showing, or is that just straight out?
You have to apply for it.
Okay, so they have to use the OPM form?
Yeah, and in addition to that, Rich, it's Lynn. The tax collector is going to administer this program, and she will be asking, under certain circumstances, for more than that. She'll be asking for proof, like proof of layoff notices and things of that nature.
Right.
We're there to help, but we're not making it, you know.
Well, the deferment's gonna apply to our bills, and most mortgages don't escrow out for sewer bills, so.
They don't, but twenty-five percent of what comes in to the town is escrow?
Yeah.
Those people probably won't make applications. If they can't pay, they probably just won't pay, because the amount of the interest is not that much on a sewer bill.
Yeah. It's only twenty-five percent and stuff.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it. Surprised. Okay, well, we gotta deal with.
Not twenty-five, twenty-five, when they say twenty-five percent, I actually couldn't tell you if they're talking about twenty-five percent of taxpayers or twenty-five percent of receipts. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But either way, it's a low number.
Okay. Jim, you said you were able to get to sign the liens?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, to sign those, yep.
All right.
That's good. Can I just add, this is Jimmy Petroski. I just have one other question, Doug, on just in terms of some of the emergent maintenance items, like the borough or water systems failure and all that. Do we, you know, kind of have a projection of what we're looking at and where that money will come from? Like which accounts and so forth?
Well, the only thing I can answer that on is we are down to approximately, and this is approximate, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars left in the money from the bond that we have not used. But when you start looking at the borough's plant water system, the communitar that we've already put on order, that money's gonna disappear real fast. So if we don't have an influx of, other than the CIP, which is, we may be in a situation where we may have to tap our sewer development fee account.
Well, a couple of things about that. This is Lynn again. That primarily, you know, principally survived all of the budget rounds. We will be setting the mill rate and forwarding it to the selectmen tomorrow. And so that's in there, and it is our intention to proceed to issue a bond as fast as possible. So I think we're okay on that. I think we're gonna, you know, we're gonna get that influx of cash, so we should be all right. And I think we will get the bond done, too. Just FYI.
I don't see an app called FYI. You could try search for.
Sorry. I hate Siri.
This is Chuck. Has anybody checked with Courtney's office on any potential for stimulus money of any kind? I know the local requirements were completely ignored in the last congressional round, which I was sad to see, but it's clearly a heightened awareness on it. And has anybody discussed that with Congressman Courtney to make sure that at least he's aware that there are some needs on the municipal side?
I don't think so.
Okay, my experience with these things is that there's, if stimulus money does become available, and it has, you know, emergency funds have been appropriated in past sessions, and when they are available, there's a short notice requirement that's published, and you've got to quickly consolidate your needs. And they generally fall into different categories, you know, every time there's an emergency. But I think when I raised this the last time, someone responded. It might have been you, Lynn, that maybe the first selectman was checking in with Congressman Courtney.
Yeah, it was me. She was. But they, she has to kind of go through the state. And I'm focused on pretty much anything but right now. Or that was true weeks ago, but I will ring her bell on this again.
I think we should just be, you know, fill the square that we have requirements, you know, that are related to COVID, whether it's delinquencies or regardless of what it is. You know, revenue is off because of COVID. It's COVID-related. And, you know, we should at least, I think, register that so that if there is a call from the feds for applications for these grants or loans or whatever they turn out to be, they're generally grants, you know, we've, we're in the, at the railroad station with our bags packed, so to speak.
Yeah, it's Lynn again. The problem is, we don't have a grant writer, that's number one. And number two, Chuck, what normally happens? Is it done at the municipal level, or does the state get a grant, and then we apply to the state?
You apply to the state. DEP has generally done it in the past. And I'd be happy to help. I've done a lot of them. So I'd be happy to help, Doug. And it's not, it's not that laborious. It's fairly simple compared to most federal grants. So it's, you know, I'm happy to help Doug in this area, and I've done a bunch of them. So I think at this point, the only thing we can do is coordinate with the first select person and tell her that we've, you know, we've got things that we think are valid requirements if there is an opportunity to, you know, to get federal money.
Well, she'll be very happy to hear that, and very happy to have the skill on board to do it, so.
Great. Okay, this is Rich again. Any other questions about the budget status or the sewer development maintenance funds?
Rich, I don't have the, this is Chuck. I don't have the agenda in front of me. I'm driving. So is there, are we gonna talk about that purchasing requirement, like the emergency authorization and some other area on the agenda?
Yeah.
I know that we had.
I was gonna take that up under the director's report.
Great, okay. Then forget, we'll bring it up under there. Thank you.
Vadder bills.
Yep.
So, okay, any other questions about that? About budget status, sewer development, maintenance?
This is Doug. Basically, I just want to point out that you'll see that we have a balance in our checking account of eight seventy-nine. That's, that account will probably take a pretty good hit in the next, by the time we meet next, only because of those invoices where we were behind. So just be aware of that. That may take a tumble.
Okay, moving on to item number five, which is bills. Doug, you've got a couple of bills. I guess you're just pointing these out to us. We've got an MRRA of seventeen and change, an annual contract, two oh eight, four fifty-one.
Yes.
Anything especially key for us on those?
No, just to point out, like I have been doing all along until we run out of money in the bond, is that any big-ticket items that we've had to do, that are really capital items, we've been paying for those out of the bond. So for instance, I believe it's February's or March, we have a sixty thousand dollar bill that came due. And forty-five thousand of that was to upgrade Diving Street Pump Station, which really was the CIP project. But we had an opportunity to get it done, and we did it, and we paid for it under the existing bond. Just so you're aware of, that's, because basically, our MRRA account is really funded with a hundred and fifty thousand a year, which equates to about twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight. It just, it doesn't cut it. It might cut it for normal expenses, but lately, we just haven't had a lot of normal expenses. You know, we've had some issues here and there that we've had to tap. I'm just glad that we've had this remaining bond money. Unfortunately, it's getting close to being gone, but it's served us well.
Okay, is Rich again, any questions about it, comments? Okay, I guess number six, we'll take some time with the director's report, Doug, if you want to walk us through it.
Okay, just right now, the status of the I&amp;I program. We're trying to move forward on that, even though we're late in the spring. We still believe that the water tables are high enough that we'd like to keep moving on this. The latest thing that we have is the locations of the fourteen meters that are going in. That has pretty much, we're just waiting, we have a couple of issues with that, is that some of these meters have to be installed on state roads. And we're trying to approach the state to see if we can expedite the permit process for us to be out there doing that. If we can't, we're just gonna have to avoid those, I think, the three areas that we will not be able to pick up. So that's where we are on that study, so we are moving forward on that. The contract for the transmission diversion line, bids are due on.
Doug, if I can just interrupt.
Sure.
The I&amp;I study, did you sign a contract with CDM on that?
We signed two contracts. One was a master agreement, and one was the master services agreement.
Yep, and you signed those just recently, right?
Well, the, all right, the master services, which is the one that we had, we ran by our attorneys, that was signed on April twentieth after some changes, as requested by Rich Barger. And then I just signed a draft task order not too long ago, which allowed us to start moving forward. This is the one that we all reviewed, and we all thought it was fine, and so we went forward with it.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions about those? I think we should probably vote to ratify and confirm his acts in entering into those agreements.
I agree. I have no questions. Lynn.
Okay, somebody want to make the motion?
I move to ratify the agreements that Doug has signed with no modifications.
With respect to the I&amp;I study?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Any second?
This is Jim. I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Sounds unanimous. Okay, Doug, why don't you move on to the next one?
Okay, transmission line bids are out. Pre-bid meeting was held. It was a virtual meeting. It was about two hours long, but I think we got a lot of the questions. Addendums will be added to, for the contractors who are bidding. And it looks like we're moving along on that. The bids are due May seventh at two PM, and there will be a video bid opening the following morning at ten AM, which will then be placed on the town's website for viewing as a taped item as well.
Okay, this might be a good time to take up that matter Charles raised, because Doug's gonna have to, we're gonna be looking at signing a contract after the bids come in and get to giddy up and go on that project. And I see that the bids are due May seventh, and we're probably not gonna be having a May meeting, although I guess they are talking about opening the state in May twentieth. But I personally don't see a meeting before June. So Chuck, did you want to comment on that? Chuck still here?
I'm sorry, yes, I was on mute here, because I'm in the car. I didn't want the background noise to, so this is Chuck. My experience at the MDC, I started there in two thousand and five. I spent ten years there and survived. So about three years into my tenure, two thousand and eight, I approached the legislature because we were enabled by statute, and all of our contracting provisions were in statute. And there was a six thousand dollar cap on purchase orders, and everything else had to be bid competitively bid. The legislature in that case looked at all of our transactions, and granted, we were a much bigger agency. I'm not sure that really is a factor, though, because some of the requirements are very similar that Doug has with the smaller treatment plants. The legislature changed our statute and gave us twenty thousand dollars. And there was some due diligence associated with it, but it was, you know, the normal contracting protocols, you get three quotations, you know, there was some due diligence associated with raising the limit. But it was a much more expedited process than having to publish an advertisement and receive competitive bids. So, you know, I raised that just as an example of something that the legislature did for the MDC, another WPCA, and even that's somewhat dated now. So, you know, we found that it worked well for us, and I think it would still work well. I don't know how that fits into the charter limitations, and what the charter says is, you know, the maximum for a PO. But based on the challenges that you're confronted with, you need flexibility, and I would just use that as an example of, as something that was authorized by the legislature for a similar organization, there was statutory protection for it, and at least it's a good example. So twenty thousand is what that number was that they granted us.
So I can shed a little light on this. And Doug, I'm gonna encourage you to go talk to Jim Sullivan. But technically, we have a fifteen thousand dollar threshold at Board of Finance before you have to come and ask for a bid waiver. You know, I'm not, I'm not an expert by any means on state statutes and bid waivers and whatnot, but for something that doesn't appear, for example, on the state bid list and things of that nature, then technically, I think the sewer, like everyone else in town, since it's taxpayer funds in part, requires a bid waiver from Board of Finance. But you should maybe ask Jim Sullivan this question?
Well, if I can weigh in on this, because I've issued several opinions in respect of it.
Excellent.
Our position's always been, and we've taken this with the Board of Finance in the past, that when there are municipal bond money being spent, like in the Mystic project, the charter provision requiring a bid applied. Other than that, we have no bid requirements, because there's none in the statute. And I've ruled a couple of times for several towns that a bid ordinance confining the WPCA to enter into contracts and buy equipment is not authorized by the enabling legislation under the Minnesota Water Push and Control Act. So I enjoy, I think we should enjoy that kind of position so that we don't have things standing in our way and other political, so we can avoid a political spectacle when we go out and spend sixty thousand dollars on a pump or fix a pump station. And part of the reason for, and by the way, my opinion's not, you know, I'm not alone in that. Most municipal lawyers take that position. So.
That's good.
So the idea being that, you know, we don't have time to wait for public meetings to be able to fix things. And because it's a specialty, in other words, we have to hit permit requirements, the bidding ordinance would interfere with our ability to do that if we needed to expend. So those are some of the rationales and justifications for it. What I want to do is, you know, Chuck raised the statutory issues of the, you know, of the statutory agency of the MDC. We're governed by a different set of statutes. There's nothing in there that limits the expenditures. What I was, what I'm trying to figure out is how, in the event we can't get a virtual meeting together, due to the awkwardness of it, do we want to, you know, sort of Doug and I have been dangling out there a little bit and trying to make decisions. We're passing information back and forth to you guys. You know, you're taking everybody's temperature, but we don't really have, you know, authorization to spend and sign other than in the ordinary course. So with these contracts coming up, I just didn't know if you wanted to consider the idea of authorizing Doug to sign, you know, to sign contracts under a certain protocol of a certain amount of money, and then maybe a larger amount with my approval? Or, you know, with the idea that we circulate the contracts to everybody in advance? Or do you want to just hold out on these contracts for a virtual meeting? It's really up to you. I can go either way with it.
This is Chuck. Having been in Doug's position, I would say that the, I would favor the first option that you selected is that you and he have special authority under these contracts. And I know, Rich, that the MDC statutes only applies to the MDC, and that WPCAs are under a different enabling statute. But that statute doesn't deal with contracting. That's why I brought up this twenty thousand dollar limitation. But even that doesn't sound like it's enough. So I would favor, I would favor the option that you raised, where you and Doug have special authority under the agreement, and it would obviously come back to the board in a report. I'm sorry, Lynn, I didn't mean to walk on you when I started to talk.
That's the trouble with these things. It's hard to know who's gonna talk. So I'm in favor of that, too, provided that that gives Doug, you know, and Rich enough cover for anything that might go wrong or be a problem. That's a lot of responsibility to take on.
Well, let's just say, it's fair to say I'll be watching that very carefully. And I consider it only temporary until, you know, until we can start having ordinary meetings or even another meeting like this. I just don't want to lose time on the diversion project.
Yeah, I understand that, but, you know, so my question really is, Rich, you sound like, you know, you're comfortable, and you've got a skill set that I can understand why you would be. Doug, are you?
Yeah, I, you know, I realize that, I guess I should say it this way. I mean, anything a super large amount, like for instance, I'll be talking about the secondary clarifiers at Pogatuck, where we're gonna have a spec written. It's taken an awful long time to write that spec. And because they have a spec, probably go the whole distance and do a bid on that job, because it's going to end up being close to half a million dollars repair by the time we're done. But a lot of times, if we can get a decent specification for the work that's being done and circulate that amongst the people that we do business with on items that are smaller and we just want to get them done, yeah, I think that's the best way to proceed, only because we have so much that needs to get done. We can't, I mean, I'm thinking about how long it took us to go out to bid for the transmission line. It should be bid, but it just adds so much time and just, it slows things down. So I'm comfortable with it, Lynn.
Okay.
Well, here's my suggestion, because I don't want us to dangle out there for too long, Doug. And if you're gonna be going out to bid, I think, you know, by the time a contract comes in, it's gonna be June anyway, except for this I&amp;I study. So what I'd like, what I'm suggesting, what I would suggest is that, let me know if this is enough, that Doug and I are authorized to expand up to a hundred thousand on each project where there's a, you know, a certain degree of urgency. And so long as we circulate and receive comment from everybody, and also after we do the same, circulate and receive comment back on the I&amp;I project, that Doug be authorized to enter into that contract after we've reviewed. that Doug be authorized to answer into that contract after we've reviewed it. And I think that's about as far as I'd like to go at this point. Anything over 100,000, I'd suggest we wait for a meeting or figure something else out.
Do you want to put a duration? This is Chuck. Do you want to put a duration on that?
Why don't we say until, yeah, until our meeting in June?
Yeah, I think that's a great, I think that's a great framework that you laid out there, and I would support that.
This is Jim. Pardon me, this is Jim. I just wanted to make sure I understood the, are you limited to the transmission and II projects? Or should it just be broader, you know, of other emergent items that require immediate attention as well?
Yeah, this is Rich. Jimmy, you make a good point. I mean, you know, some emergency may come up, and we'd have to decide. So, maybe the I and I emergency projects and expenditures of up to 100,000 that are non-emergency.
Yep, I support that.
This is Chuck, I agree.
How do you feel, Pete?
Yeah, I agree, too. I support it.
Okay, so, let's assume that Doug can take that up from the recording. Does someone want to make a motion to that effect?
This is Chuck, so moved.
Second?
Pete, Pete, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, Doug. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing on your list was the Burrow Plant, the system failure?
Yeah, I sent you guys an email about that. That's a job that's been lingering out there and has come to a head. They have, Suez has not gotten me any pricing on that. I've asked them to come up with an idea of some kind of a spec. If they can't do it, I may have Beta write something up for us so that we can put something out there and see if we can get some interested parties in doing that repair. In the meantime, they've connected city water with appropriate backflow prevention to make up the difference, because obviously, this will cool packing on pumps, and they use it for the thickening process. So, we don't, even though Suez is paying for the water, we don't want this to go on. It's a waste of city water when we could be using effluent water, which is what this is for, so that we can do wash downs in the plant pumps and the thickening system. So, I'm still waiting on them for pricing. So, that's just, right now, it's on there to make us aware that it's there, and it's gonna, it's gonna come up.
So, given that they're paying for the water, why aren't they anxious to actually do the work instead of having to go out and get beat up?
Well, they immediately contacted me, saying that they wanted to, you know, that this was an issue. So, I said to them, well, get pricing. I know it's been a capital item since Jim Nyberg was here, and it's just been, you know, was just put in the back burner. And now it's gotten to the point where they can't tie it, piece it together anymore.
But if Beta goes and does this for us, we gotta pay them, right?
If we want them to come up with a spec, I don't think that's necessary. I mean, I think, like I said, I'm still waiting for Eric to give me a price on, you know, calling around and trying to get some prices on what this, you know, what this might cost. I know Jim Nyberg had put a price tag of 125, whether 1,000. I don't know if that was just a shot in the dark, or if that was based upon something that he had, some research that he had done.
Well, we have to deal with it, you know?
Okay.
I mean, it's up to them, it's up to Suez to make it an urgency where, you know, they've got to provide me with the information to go forward on it. So, the ball's in their court at this point.
Okay, next on your list, I think you talked about it already, the secondary clarifiers.
Well, I just wanted to bring up the fact that it's taken us forever, and we're really using our, the ones clarifier that we have that we can rely on. Just wanted to let you know that what is gonna be one of the big expenses here is renting temporary clarifiers during construction phase. And what we're doing here is, is we, this facility is like 45 years old now. Those, some major components in those clarifiers, which were never replaced, although there's been work done to those clarifiers in the past, they never went back and replaced some of the core items that need to be replaced now. And to do that, what Beta has found is that it was easy at the time they were installed, the clarifiers were dry. Well, there's a shaft that runs through both clarifiers, so both clarifiers have to be dropped and dried before you can do the work on either of them to replace this, the shaft and the two bull gears. So, that is gonna be an expense, and so that's why I'm saying that this project could run us in the 400,000 to 500,000 range by the time we're done. They have told me that they're... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is Rich again. I was just gonna say, keep in mind, Doug, probably in this contract, we're gonna want some deadline with liquidated damages on whoever's doing the bill, so we're not paying for that for long.
Right, right. My biggest frustration here has been, Beta has taken, well, I mean, this really started, they started to work on this while I was out during my surgery in December. And it's taken this long to get me a specification. And I can't put all the blame at there, you know, some of it is limited access because of COVID. But, you know, part of it is the age, and going back and trying to find the people who put this together and finding a plan so that we can come up with a solution. So, but they promised me something within the next week and a half. So, hopefully, we can put something together.
Okay, thanks. How about the last two, the Communitator and the Wright Pierce?
I don't know if I, the Communitator, they, you know, they gave us a price on it. I think it's been ordered, but it hasn't been delivered yet, so I'll let you know when that comes in. The post-bid engineering services with Wright Pierce. Obviously, their contract, which was for like 138,000, was to do Wright the spec, do all the work, do the, collect the bids, do the addendums, review the bids when they come in, basically get everything done until the bids are signed. After we get into the construction phase, there was no, there was no monies allocated for that. And what they're proposing is an additional 130,000. I don't think I, did I send you guys that contract? I'll have to send that to you, but it was around 135,000 for doing those services. That means that as the contract moves forward, they will handle all transmittals, they will review all equipment specs, they will have an onsite person, not full-time, because we don't think we're gonna need one. But we're gonna need to sign that at some point within the next 60 days, because we're not gonna award the bid. I think we have 60 days to award the bid. I don't know why we have so much time, but that's what we allotted. So, it's nothing that we have to do today. I can get you the contract, you can check it out and see what you think. And we can go forward or not, depending on what you want to do.
This is Jim. I mean, we want to look at the words on it, but the function is necessary. I mean, we want to have their eyes, you know, in the field and everything to ensure that whatever the contractor's doing meets the technical requirements. So, I think it's, you know, it's a needed function.
Yes, it definitely is.
This is Rich. I agree with you, Jim. You know, we need somebody who's gonna be telling us whether change orders are appropriate, signing off on payments and things of that nature.
Now, the only problem will be here is if our bid number comes in, we have a million and six as a budget figure. If that number comes in high, we may have to pay for this out of our own budget somehow. Just say I know that.
Okay.
Somehow, okay.
Okay, Doug, was there anything else in your report that you had to...
No, I think, I think that's pretty much it, Rich. I think that's it.
Okay, I don't have a report. Anybody want to move to approve the minutes in February?
Sure, this is Jim. I moved to approve February minutes.
Any second?
Pete, second.
Pete, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, going back to number two, did Glenn ever appear?
No, I don't know where Glenn is. He, I sent it to, just checking to see, confirm that he was on the... And I have to say, it's my fault. He was not on the list.
Oh, okay. Was there anything in the reports that anybody wanted to talk about anyway? Nothing really seemed to be extraordinary to me, but...
I guess the only comment is that I, the nature of how their staff in the facilities during COVID, with, you know, one operator and people on call and all that, I just wanted to make sure, like Doug, from your perspective, we're operating sufficiently that way?
Well, obviously, you know, this is trying times, and, you know, it's, as much as I feel like we're paying for half a staff right now, it's a necessary evil to keep them separate and to keep, to assure that we don't get a bunch of operators sick at the same time. I do believe that we're, you know, we're paying a premium right now because we're not getting as much work done. And, you know, we obviously don't have the personnel that we, that are actually onsite working like we normally do. But I don't think that's anything new for anybody or any community or any business right now. So, it's a necessary evil.
Yep, that's good. I was really, you know, just to kind of get it on the table, that was all.
Yeah, I agree. There's a level of frustration there, but it's, you know, it is what it is.
Yep, that's good.
All right, do we have any other business? Jim, anything?
This is Pete. I'm curious on Glenn's report, Doug, maybe you can answer the, they said that stormwater training with the highway department, what's all that about?
They had training, we have to have, be trained on stormwater that, from certain locations in town. So, highway department was there because they have certain locations that are potential to discharge stormwater within the working area. So, it's more of a, it's a state requirement for the training, and that's why we went.
Okay, I was just curious a little bit, what, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, Lynn? Anything?
Nope, I don't really have anything else to say. We'll be setting the mill racing tomorrow.
Okay, good luck with that. Chuck, anything from the car?
No, everything's, everything's great. I decided to pull over. It was, I'm not ambidextrous enough, but I'm fine, thank you. This worked out well.